Good evening, and welcome to this, the December 10th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order, with the roll call show that all members of the council are present and accounted for. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay, first thing on the agenda, we have the confirmation of advisory body appointments and reappointments. That would be for the Beautification Committee Cynthia Daig, Commission for the Arts Robert Gaussman, Manya Lane, Elizabeth McWhorter, Historic Preservation Commission Barbara Savoy, Human Services Commission Olivia Angus, the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission Youth Member Mariah Chowdery, and for the Livermore Housing Authority, the reappointment of Wanda Hunter and Mark Palajak. Do I have a motion?
Will we accept the nominations?
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Motion made by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering your time. Going to, is there anyone here to issue the, okay. Those members that I just rattled off, your names, please come up and receive the oath of office. Very good, thank you. Y'all look familiar. Thank you for all of your time and efforts, greatly appreciated. Okay, this is some mixed emotions. I have the proclamation honoring a councilmember who had the good sense to not run this year.[213.12][213.12](Laughter) To avoid those slings and arrows, and it was, it truly, it was a battle, and it really was. But you not only served this council and this community, and also saw to it that the election process was carried through, and the truth was carried out there throughout the community. So it's greatly appreciated, and it's, I have truly enjoyed serving with you on the council. We haven't always agreed, but I think that's a good thing, because it invites more discussion, and the results are always better when it's collaborative. So with that, a proclamation of the City of Livermore honoring Stephen Spadovski, December 10th, 2018. Whereas Stephen Spadovski, a California native, born and raised in the East Bay, and since 2000 has lived in the city of Livermore with his family, Stephen holds a bachelor's degree and a master's of public administration from California State University, Heywood.[285.66][285.66](Laughter) And where my alma mater as well. Whereas Stephen has over two decades of experience working in the public sector, in the fields of municipal finance, transportation, environmental compliance, information technology, public outreach, and open space management, which is why you're such a tremendous resource on this council. Whereas prior to his election to the Livermore City Council in 2014, Stephen Spadovski was an active member of the Livermore community, completing the Livermore Citizens Police Academy program, and serving on the Beautification Committee and the Planning Commission. And whereas Councilmember Spadovski supported the preservation of Livermore's unique character and quality of life, as a councilmember, Stephen spoke focused on preserving open space, public safety, promoting the arts, advocating for good governance, and supporting the revitalization of the downtown. And whereas during his tenure, Councilmember Spadovski served on the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority, where he used to work, the Livermore Regional Traffic Authority, the Tri-Valley Transportation Committee, Livermore Double Liaison Committee, and League of California Cities East Bay Division Committee, he also served as Vice Mayor in 2017. Whereas the City of Livermore recognizes the significant time spent away from his family, and acknowledges the sacrifice that they made as Councilmember Spadovski served our community. Too often, the family members are forgotten, because this takes a tremendous amount of time. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore honors Stephen Spadovski for his service and contributions to the Livermore community, and wishes him well in the future.[401.13][401.13](Applause) And there's more. We just delivered, just moments ago, a proclamation, recognition, a certificate of recognition from the State Senate, recognizing Stephen Spadovski, and this is from Senator Glazer. Stephen Spadovski has committed four years of dedicated service on the Livermore City Council, and it is appropriate to highlight his many achievements and accomplishments, and extend special recognition to him for his civic leadership. And whereas Stephen's service to the Livermore City Council has been commendable, first elected to the Livermore City Council in 2014, and whereas during Stephen's service on the City Council, Livermore has prioritized using public dollars efficiently, by preserving open space, reducing traffic congestion, supporting our downtown, promoting arts programs, and supporting public safety. And whereas Stephen has continuously given back to the community through his commitment to family, profession, and civic duty through his membership on the Board of Directors of the Tri-Valley San Joaquin Regional Rail Authority, LAVTA, Livermore Planning Commission, and the Beautification Committee, be it resolved by Senator Stephen M. Glazer that Stephen Spadovski of Alameda County, California is commended and recognized for his commitment to the Livermore City Council and beyond. And it's signed, Stephen M. Glazer, California State Senator, 7th District.[504.84][504.84](Applause) So the recognition goes far and wide, so thank you very much. Want to say a few words?
Sure. I'm glad my last name was spelled correctly, that's always a plus. I sure am gonna miss the 1:00 AM meetings. So tonight, I think Jason, it's, I'm allowed to filibuster a bit, so if we can maybe have a discussion about, you know, Star Wars Episode IX plotlines, and then after a couple hours, I'll turn the floor over to Carl Wentie to speak for a few hours.
But if you mention Jar Jar Binks, we immediately go to recess.
Please don't say that, yeah, no, 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 I'm not a Jar Jar guy, but in all seriousness, thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank my wife and my daughter. As the resolution mentioned, it is a lot of time away from the family. I've been volunteering now in one way or another with the city for 10 years, and my daughter's 10. So I don't know why I started right when she was born, it was just kind of like, oh, kind of a weird timing of the decision, but I'm very glad that I did what I, I got involved with the community. It's really opened my eyes to how wonderful Livermore is, and I wouldn't have met 99% of the people in this room, hadn't I volunteered on the Beautification Committee 10 years ago, then Planning Commission, and now Council. It really, it's truly a great community, there are just so many wonderful people here who have the best interests of Livermore in their hearts, I'm proud to have met everybody. I want to thank the residents who voted me in, and those who didn't vote me in, I still like you anyway.[614.04][614.04](Laughter) You know, the three major items that I talked about when I was running was, you know, finishing BART to Livermore, finishing the council chambers, and completing downtown. And that kind of sort of made my decision easy, when, you know, all three are on their way. So I looked at it, and I looked at my workload during my day job, most people don't realize that when we have the 1:30 in the morning meetings, you know, I'm back at work the next day. And my day job, I've had back-to-back council meetings, where I've been 1:30 here, and then the next day I'm presenting at another council meeting, followed up by additional night meetings. So it's been quite the slug for the last four years. I do want to thank three staff members in particular. Livermore staff, y'all have been great, just absolutely wonderful, returning phone calls, providing information, I mean, each and every one of you, I could see that it's really in your hearts to work for this community, so thank you to the city staff in general. But three in particular, Mark, I wanted to thank you for your guidance and your sense of humor. I was gonna compare each staff member to a different Star Wars character tonight, but you know, I thought, hey, Mark's a perfect Yoda, I mean, because he's, he's always just gently reminding us of things, and kind of guiding us along the way, it's so, I really appreciate his, his knowledge and sense of humor, it's like we were raised watching the same films, or maybe I saw them in reruns, I don't know. I also wanted to thank Jason for being, you know, very patient and very thorough. It's just, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and to listen to my crazy ideas, and kind of feel like when my daughter was six, and I'd be like, why, 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 and Jason always had the perfect answers, so thank you. And I also wanted to call out Paul Spence. Again, Paul and Jason were the staff members when I was on the Planning Commission, and you know, I feel like I ran just to follow them, because when they were bumped up to council, I really missed working with you guys. And Paul, I have never seen you angry, I've never even seen you slightly annoyed, it's just, I mean, he's one of the most pleasant people to work with, thank you very much. It's been a great pleasure serving with every councilmember here, and the previous councilmembers a few years back, so thank you very much. You know, to wrap it up, you know, I plan to keep staying involved, I've always referred to myself as a local government nerd, but I understand those who serve up here, who kind of take a long break afterwards, because you really do burn out with a lot of the work. But it's just in me to serve, so I'll probably be applying for, you know, some committee, or wearing a yellow jacket at an event, or something just to stay involved. Yeah, I just, you know, thank you very much. The one accomplishment though, that wasn't mentioned here, that I really want to highlight, and I think it was one of the proudest moments up here, was suggesting that we adopt the Livermore Tar Plant as our city flower.[806.32][806.32](Laughter) So that, yeah, I got, I got hands waved for that one. That one will always stick with me, it was, I think it was just a great time to do it, and I'm proud to be the one to suggest that. So I will close though, with welcoming Trish Monroe, a little preemptive before you're sworn in, so welcome Councilmember Monroe, I want to say that first. And part of my decision-making process for deciding not to run, really, the nail in the coffin for me was when I met Trish, and got to know her better.[837.13][837.13](Laughter) Well, I mean, not to put it that way, but the nail in the coffin for me not to run with, okay.[842.41][842.41](Laughter) You know, as you can tell, I have a few notes, I've never really planned speeches here, I've always just spoke from the heart, you know what I mean, Trish, no offense, but knowing that somebody like Trish was running, and could do such a great job, it gave me such a comfort level to step back for a little while, you know, maybe see what happens in four years when my district comes up, I don't know, I've always sort of played it by ear. But thank you, Trish, for deciding to run, and congratulations.
So I would just like to acknowledge that it's been four years with Stephen, I can't believe it's gone that quickly, we've gone through a lot, and it's been a great experience working with Stephen. He's brought a different perspective, and I've learned a lot from our conversations. As the mayor mentioned, we haven't always agreed on things, but Stephen has always been available for a really good conversation about the pros and cons of various issues, it's been very valuable. So I'm truly gonna miss you on the, as a colleague here, it's been a, just great. And I'm hoping that you reappear up here, you know, for the benefit of Livermore, so I'm looking forward to that, and I just, just very, as you said, heartfelt, it's been, you've made the work up here a lot easier, it's difficult, and working with you has been great, so thank you.
Yeah, we all bring different life experiences to these positions, and I think one of the, a unique part of Stephen is the fact that he's a staff member, works for this, who works for the city of San Ramon, was on the Planning Commission here, and then elected the City Council, so he's had a wealth of experience, and I've enjoyed hearing his perspective, because it's oftentimes, you know, things that I haven't thought of, because I don't have the same perspective he has from his experience working in San Ramon and being on Planning Commission. So I've always appreciated his points of view, and will certainly miss him, but looking forward to working with Trish Monroe too, as she gets sworn in this evening. So again, thanks very much, Stephen, for all your support over the last couple of years.
Well, I'll be much simpler. I first met Steve when I was a director at LARPD, and he came down to judge a Halloween costume contest in front of the bankhead. And I could tell within just a few minutes that we were gonna be great, great friends, so it was wonderful, just shooting off one-liners, one after another, and the Star Wars references were in abundance even then, and we had a great time. It's been a pleasure working with you up here, I hope to have you up here for an appointment somewhere, whenever you feel comfortable with it, or whatever works for you. It's been a pleasure, I've learned a lot from you about city planning, when you have to combine what you know about that with what we'd have to do up here to make sure things get done, I imagine there's some conflicting stuff sometimes, but you handle it with extreme grace, and it's been wonderful working with you, thank you so much for your service.
Yeah, the first time I met you, it was at a meet and greet when I was running for mayor, at former councilmember Doug Horner's house. And you had a tremendous interest in how the city was operating, and that's when you later got onto the Planning Commission, and you've been doing great work with the city, and I greatly appreciate that. Recognize the tremendous time and effort, because, recognize that you are a staff member of the agency, and, you know, I've been there when you get a 2 o'clock meeting letting out here, and you gotta get up at 5 o'clock in the morning to go to work, so I certainly appreciate the commitment and the passion that you brought. And certainly, thank you very much, and look forward to working with you in the future, in whatever capacity. Thank you. I guess I have to move on, don't I? All right.[1113.23][1113.23](Laughter) And let me just say, Deianandra Bachi Galupi, the Livermore Tar Plant.[1118.73][1118.73](Laughter) Because that would, that would be yours. It exists nowhere else in the world, just shows what a remarkable community we have, the great people here, and other resources, nowhere else in the world, and you recognize that, so you'll always have that, it's always, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda, and the City Council cannot deliberate nor take action during the Citizens Forum. So with that, Greg Scott, Neil Herrick, Jacob Anderson. Mr. Scott?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mashawn, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, video land people, and the people in this room, welcome. I am Greg Scott, I speak on homelessness in Livermore. I want to thank the City of Livermore for, as I requested in the last City Council, for returning at least some of the homeless man, Richard French's items, two days after I spoke to you at the City Council. He told me that 80% of his belongings were returned from his bicycle trailer, but not his bicycle trailer, I don't know if those other items have been returned since, so he only spent two nights out there without his bedding. I don't really understand why all of his items weren't returned, it just seems malicious to me. Mr. French, as I understand it, is a United States Marine Corps veteran. Why we treat our veterans like this, I don't really understand, but I have direct experience with that, because my brother's a Vietnam vet, he fought in the Tet Offensive with the 101st Airborne. Two of his platoon of 32 came back to this fairly ungrateful country intact. I think we should treat our veterans better, such as Mr. French. And by the, every day, I learn how we treat the homeless, and I don't understand it, I don't understand the game here with what we're doing about the homeless. It's Christmas. In the Judeo-Christian realm, the parents of Jesus were told, there's no room at the inn. Perhaps Joseph and Mary should have stood in the roadway, and waited for the city of Bethlehem to eventually do something for them, all they needed was patience perhaps, except for one imperative of urgency that Mary had, they couldn't do that, apparently. So luckily, they got a manger. In 2000 years, what have we learned from this? Oh, we're so much more clever, aren't we? Not only do we tell the homeless, there's no room at the inn, we tell them, there's no place on the planet. That's wonderful. The question is, you still can't answer from even the first time I talked to you, a year before September, where do you expect the homeless to go? Okay. To incoming Councilwoman Trish Monroe, congratulations. In Ms. Monroe's platform was consideration for the vulnerable. This is gonna be interesting in regards to the homeless, especially the resources and how they're used. Constantly, I hear in this room, how there's not enough resources, that's interesting, because there's just over a million dollars in human services grants. And also, I hear about how it's a regional problem, yes it is, I don't know what that has to do with it, but Livermore's also a part of it. Aboz Services gets housing for people, yes, and some of these housing, a long-time homeless person, Annie, who's in a wheelchair, was got, she got housing in Newark, I guess there was no housing in Vladivostok, Siberia, I don't really understand that, but, you know, we should really be getting shelter for women, it's Christmas, and we really need to be doing a better job here in this community for the homeless, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And as was pointed out, when we did the point-in-time homeless survey several years ago, we found out, we learned that over 90% of the homeless veterans were not receiving the benefits from the federal government, to which they were entitled. And this is an issue that I have taken up with the US Conference of Mayors, and with the VA, that they should be getting their services, and one of the issues that we have started here, is to try to connect those servicemen to the benefits to which they are entitled. And there was a backlog for the VA of over 38,000 cases just out of the Oakland office, and that's, the veterans' benefits are federal, and we need to connect them to the benefits to which they are entitled, and we continue to work to achieve that. So thank you for bringing that to our awareness. Neil Herrick, Jacob Anderson, Carl Wentie. Mr. Herrick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, as we, excuse me, as we look back on 2018, I have been very disappointed in the way this council, the staff have been treated by the citizenry. I have listened to the audience tell me that people that don't live within the city boundaries should not be allowed to address the council. I have seen this council berated over innuendo, not facts, rumors. I have seen this staff put together a great deal of time, effort, only to have it dismissed. I've had family members who have fought for the rights that every one of us have in this audience, and I do not appreciate having this council treated the way it is. I respect each and every one of you, I think each and every one of you has done a fantastic job over the two, four, six years that I have known you. I think we need to be very grateful for the society we live in, many of us have, as this gentleman has said, things that other people will not have, do not have. We have a duty as citizens to keep the council informed and monitored, but we have a duty to respect this council. And this council, and every member of the city staff, every city employee, deserves the respect of the citizenry of Livermore. And I apologize for the way some of you have been treated. I am also sad that some of you are not considering continuing on with the city. I understand, this has been a vicious election, from city all the way through to governor. I wish you would reconsider. I do not want the bullies of this world to push aside good people with good views, honest people who care, who are compassionate. I do not want this gentleman left out in the cold with his people, because special interests have pushed people aside. To Mr. Wentie, I think he is a fantastic speaker for what goes on. I would hate to think that Mr. Wentie and I become the only two people in this town who speak every week, who care and compassion. Mr. Wentie is a wonderful speaker and a compassionate person, I tend to roll on and on and on, so that would not be good for the citizenry. I do appreciate everyone, I don't mean to be emotional, it's been a rough day. Thank you, you all have my respect.
Thank you, Mr. Herrick, thank you very much. Jacob Anderson, Carl Wentie, John Stein.
Before I get started, I just want to say I agree with Neil, and what he said, but on a little bit of a lighter side, today is the last council meeting with Councilmember Spadovski. He's done a great job growing his beard out for charity, he would say it makes him look more Wookiee-like, but an Ewok might be a better comparison.[1625.71][1625.71](Laughter) Councilmember Spadovski has served his community, and he will be missed, almost as much as he will miss his councilmember swivel chair. I know that one thing he won't miss is being called an old white guy. He's not that old, he just looks that way.[1646.15][1646.15](Laughter) I know Councilmember Spadovski will be glad to have some time back, after four and a years, he can now start using Twitter again. His last tweet wasn't that long ago, it was November 5th, 2014.[1663.33][1663.33](Laughter) He will be missed, but in his years of service, he made one mistake. A few years ago, Councilmember Spadovski interviewed me for the Community Assessment Management Program Committee, and decided that out of the many applicants, I would not make the final cut. Thankfully, it worked out for the best, shortly after that, I was to be married, and time was in short supply, so probably for the best. All kidding aside, I want to thank this council for their work over the past two years. I know that your love and hard work for the city, a lot of times goes unnoticed. I appreciate your endurance from the attacks of being an elected official, probably more than most other city councils. I am encouraged to see most of you returning. Councilmember Spadovski, I am deeply appreciative to you for your hard work, your generosity, your thoughtfulness. It has been a blessing to have such a city policy nerd on the council. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Carl Wentie and John Stein.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you all for what you do for service, city staff, everybody that's back there, a lot of faces that are part of the process of good government, I thank you, I salute you, I'm humbled by the work that we continually do. Mr. Herrick, thank you for the kind words of the people, for the people, by the people, for we are a democratic republic, right, and we elect people to govern, and to appoint as it comes through, so I am humbled by our system, we should all celebrate a elegant and peaceful transition of power, if you will, as we swear in new elected representatives. Trish, rock on, good on ya. I never said old white men, I did say six-year-old white men, so like, I want to be clear, it wasn't, I didn't call y'all old, but we celebrate the diversity, and the people that were re-elected, that shows the trust- And the people that were re-elected, that shows the trust that the electorate has in you, and I thank you for your continual treasure of that trust. Trish Monroe, the newfound trust is placed upon you to act in the best interest, to the best of your ability, the city of Livermore, and I have great faith in your ability to do so, to put your intellect to the work of good government, fundamentally serving. So I thank you and salute you. Govern well, appoint well. This is what it is. So I also want to say that I wrote a card that said "all consent items." I was trying to say paper as I'm putting in all the cards, but I'm just going to do it right now instead, and say thank you to all of the work that goes into it. Again, Mr. Alessio, the volume of work that has to go in to everything that's there. And I'm not just... I'm not just pointing at you. Same with you. Like, you do smile most all the time, right? It's like, I bet there's a bad day out there somewhere. Steve, I was so ready for you to go to two other Star Wars characters as you went down the line, but you stopped at Yoda. But maybe to be continued on another discussion. Also, want to point out the many thanks to those that have to put on a bulletproof vest to go to work and serve to make the community safer. I think Mr. Chief is back there as well. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you all for what you do as we go through. Again, let's celebrate a beautiful, elegant transition of power as new people are elected to serve and make this world, our city, a better place. I'd like to point out that my name's Carl Winty, and I live just outside of the city, right? I'm not even a resident, but this town is my town, a town that I love so much. Unify, bringing things together. So that's what we should be about. I am going to humbly apologize, Trish, that I'm not going to be able to sit here and watch you get sworn in because I'm going to skedaddle my way on out as opposed to getting to the end of this meeting. But again, I just want to celebrate our democratic republic. Celebrate that the incumbents have won by a good, resounding margin. Celebrate the increase of diversity with Trish coming on board. So thank you all for what you do. Anybody that's part of the city's staff and the likes, thank you so much for what you do.
Perfect timing. And since the comments came about old and white, you'll notice the old white beard is gone. With the end-of-November beard, it was also the end of the beard itself. However, there is still an opportunity to donate to the Shop with a Cop through the city of Livermore, Livermore Police Department, and also an opportunity to support the Rooms of Hope, which is at the First Street Ale House, providing rooms for critically ill children. So those are still available, still worthy of your support and the reason for the beards. So with that, thank you. Mr. Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I'd like to thank all of you and echo the comments of the previous speakers, and particularly the leaving council member who can now begin working on becoming more Yoda-like in appearance, if not wisdom, like the rest of us. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to close the Citizens Forum, moving on to the Consent Calendar. I do have one card on Consent Calendar. Are there any other items that anyone wishes to pull on consent after discussion? Okay. With that, Mr. Stein, 4.13. That is the $1 million for the acquisition of...
137 acres on Doolin Canyon Road. I think this is a great idea, and I heartily endorse it. I think the city has accumulated significant amounts of resources, and it's time to start expending them on acquiring open space. And this is a particularly important piece of open space. First, because it would be nice to acquire all of the undeveloped land in Doolin Canyon to maintain an entire ecosystem and watershed. And second, because it firms up the urban growth boundaries between Dublin and Livermore. Urban growth boundaries by themselves do not preserve open space. They merely delay development. It's only by acquiring either easements or property in fee simple that the open space is buffered and protected. And I urge you to begin acquiring land in the central area of North Livermore. On the south side, we have a lot of signs that say "protected in perpetuity," this property protected in perpetuity, put up by the Tri-Valley Conservancy. We have not yet begun to see those in North Livermore, and there's increased pressure for things like solar farms, temples, cemeteries, schools, and it's important that we acquire control of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
There are urban nerds all over the place.
I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Stein. And I'm a member of the Altamont Open Space Committee, and we do have a lot of money that's accumulated, and our issue is finding willing sellers. So one of the things I instigated was actually the Open Space Committee being more proactive in trying to find them. And the first step is doing a sort of a strategic study of what lands are, would we like to target? Now, it's a delicate matter because you can't influence it from the government, but it's too much. But we do want to have in advance an idea of what are the top priorities, and should something become available, we want to be in a position to move as quickly as possible. And the lands will only get more expensive over time and more rare. So we are trying to do what we can to understand where we should be targeting. And we've actually hired a consultant to help us do the evaluation of, given across all the dimensions of how you think about it, which are the top priorities. So we are doing what we can in that respect.
Well, thank you. And I think 4.13 recognizes the ongoing continuing commitment by the city to preserve open space in perpetuity. If there's nobody else has any questions on the Consent Calendar, I just got a couple of questions I'd like to run through. 4.08, there's going to be... This is the work being done along the Robertson Park mitigation site. And Zone 7 is going to be doing some significant work. In fact, they had a workshop last week on Maderis Parkway. Is there any opportunity to coordinate the efforts on these? Is it the same location?
Similar locations, although we did take a look at the timing on that. The city is required to do our mitigation work before Zone 7 anticipates beginning theirs. They're probably a year and a half to two years out.
Okay. Because they're talking about lowering the trails, which almost seems counterintuitive if you're worried about flooding, but that's...
I agree.
Those engineers that study this a lot more than I do, so I'm trusting them to get this right. Also, on 4.11, that's the funding on the crossing guards. I'm on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and this is going to be coming back to ACTC because there was a free student bus pass that was initially proposed, and there may be some funding there for crossing guards. So as we look at this in the future, something just to keep in mind when this does come back. And, you know, since I'm there, I'll let you know when it comes back. And just to speak to 4.12, and that's the Department of Justice grant. And that was almost, well, like $100 per page of staff report. It was 200 pages and a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I think that that's money that's going to be very well-spent, and glad that we were able to collaborate with the school district to make that happen. And it's just hope that they can, you know, provide more funding and continue to work the grants from Department of Justice. So we're... Thank you very much for the... For putting all that together. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the Consent Calendar. Okay. Consent Calendar moved by Vice Mayor Warner and seconded by...
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Carling. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The passage unanimously. Moving on to public hearings, we have none. Matters initiated and committee reports. We didn't do this last time because we were at 1:30 in the morning. It was so late, it was early. So anything to...
Just since last time, we had the LAVTA Finance and Administration meeting that I attended and got high marks for our CAFR, our pretty much an annual analysis of how our LAVTA's finances have been, and they've been outstanding. So it's good to report that. We had a meeting also at LAVTA on the...
Third?
Let's say third. And which we rolled out the CAFR for the rest of everybody and then had some personnel evaluations to attend to. So that's where I've been.
Okay. Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thanks. So early in November, we... Several of us participated in the groundbreaking for the Veterans Way road that's going in on the Catalyst site. So that's a road that will run from Livermore to L Street. So that was a lot of fun to see that moving forward, and there's now a fence up there so there's for storage of equipment and so on. So that's moving forward. November 7th, I subbed for my colleague to the far right at the East Bay Community Energy Meeting, mercifully short meeting that night, so it was pretty easy to handle for Councilmember Spodowski. On the 14th, participated in a Stop Waste meeting. And the 15th, the mayor and I went to a dinner celebration honoring the Volunteers, LPD Volunteer Group, which provided a great service to this community. See, Mr. Scott brought up a point about Mr. French's possessions, and we did get a memo from the chief. And I wondered, did you speak to Mr. Scott about that, chief, at all? Maybe you could speak to Mr. Scott about that at some point so he knows what happened to the rest of Mr. French's possessions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Was that a pause? I mean, I did have a list tonight of matters.
Dare we?
There's a city bird that I would like adopted. There's a city tree that I would like adopted.
A city rock for him?
A city... How did you know? A city wine? No, I'm joking. I don't have anything.
Last chance. Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Warner? The last time I can say that.
Well, I guess so. Well, maybe. I don't know. The... Let's see. A few things, the last in, first out, attended the menorah lighting on Saturday, and that was very... I was honored to be invited to do that. I think it was very good for the city to celebrate that. The... Went to a Rotary Club honoring Wes Morgan for the... Every 15 minutes, he's one of the outstanding traffic policemen we've had and done a whole lot against the drunk drivers. So... And of course, that wasn't the first time I met him because he's a neighbor of mine or was a neighbor of mine on Chateau, and he actually stopped me, not for drunk driving, but I had a taillight out on my car. So he was a really... He's a great guy and has done a lot for the community. Gone to LDI meetings. We had the intergovernmental meeting, and I think there was an LCAC meeting, but nothing that I would bring to attention here. But I do have a couple of matters initiated, as I always do. And I was talking earlier with Mark, and I don't think he was complaining because I don't do it enough. So the... Two things. And one is, now that we've made the major decisions with respect to the downtown, and we've selected not only where things are going to go, but who we're going to partner with, I would like to request that the staff come back by the end of January with a schedule of what will get built when. I think a number of people have been asking me this, and I think it's important for people to understand there are some things that are going to get done fairly quickly by the spring. I was just mentioning, or it was just mentioned, the Veterans Way and some other things, some in an intermediate timeframe and some much longer. And I think it would be good just to be able to set expectations. And I think we'll have clarity on the short-term ones, but the longer-term ones, not so much. So I would ask the community to understand it's just a tentative schedule, but it's something for people can kind of wrap their minds around as to what's going to happen when, with the thought that depending on reality always sets in, you know, the schedule could change, especially in the out-years. So the... And so is that... Do I have three heads on that? Or five, I guess? And the staff is okay with the timeframe? So the other item I'd like to initiate, and I actually got this from Councilmember Spodowski, is that we use newsletters, and we print them, and there's usually a time delay and a lot of cost. And so I would like to ask staff to come back, excuse me, with some options and thoughts on how we could more effectively use social media, especially advertising, to get the word out to the community when various things are happening. And I just mentioned the schedule. So when something is done, or we're going to celebrate something groundbreaking, that if you get the word out through that. So if you'd just come back with what the options are, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. All right. So on November 4th, I attended Ashton Kuhn's Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And on the 7th of November, one of my favorite things is helping people hand out their money. And the Lawrence Livermore National Lab... Or excuse me, Lawrence Livermore National Security provides tens of, actually over $100,000 in grants to the community, to local nonprofits. And this is one of Lab Director Bill Goldstein's favorite things, is to be able to support the community and the many nonprofits that are doing tremendous work here. The room was packed, and there's a lot of great work that's being done that is being supported by the Lawrence Livermore National Security. On November 9th, I was honored to make a presentation on Livermore's efforts in graffiti abatement at the National Conference for Zero Graffiti International in Sacramento. On the 10th of November, I attended John Molitoris' Eagle Scout Court of Honor and presented him with a certificate of recognition from the city of Livermore. On the 14th, was the Alameda County Mayor's Conference in Albany. The 15th, as Councilmember Carling mentioned, was the Police Department Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. We really rely upon them because they do a tremendous amount of work to keep this community safe and secure. And on the 17th, I was there for Lisa Hayes' 100th birthday party. So light bulbs and ladies last longer in Livermore. So some of the fun stuff. And the 19th was the Alameda County Transportation Commission I-580 Express Lane, and also the Planning Policy and Legislative Committee, where we got a number of different updates. And with that, I have no matters to initiate. I did mention the poplar trees along Holmes last time around. But with that, no more matters for consideration. I will adjourn... I'm sorry. No, no, no. We still have to do that. Okay. It gets complicated here. Okay. So 7.01, resolution accepting the canvas of votes of the general municipal election of November 6th. Did we actually get the final canvas? Okay. So I take it nothing changed? So for the mayor, John Marchand was elected for a two-year term. Councilmember Warner was elected to a four-year term, and Trish Monroe was also elected to a four-year term. And Measure U was overwhelmingly defeated. That was an initiative to require the city of Livermore to regulate the cost of health care. So with that, I need a motion to adopt the canvas?
Sure. I'll move approval of the canvas.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Spodowski.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on the motion?
No. I was just going to say is that those four-year terms are at large because we're making this transition into the district elections.
That's right. So those are at large, and then in four years, those revert to district elections. Good catch. All right. Thank you. With that, now I will adjourn Sinadia to... And now we have the... No, now we have the delivery of the certificates to the administration of the oath of office for the councilmembers that are... Sorry to panic everybody there. There's still a lot more to go on. But yeah... Uh, but yes, Sinadia means without days. So we just, uh, we're not setting a day, it's just, uh, adjourning to the next, uh, procedure. So we're going to, uh, come down here for the oath of office so you can grab our respective oaths of office.
I'd like to call for John Marchand and Trish Monroe and also Bob Warner.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, John Marchand.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I am about to enter.
So now we will call to order the newly installed council. I call this meeting to order, uh, the, uh, Livermore City Council, uh, on this December 10th meeting, uh, part two. Uh, so with that, uh, we are going to quickly go into closed session. Uh, so feel free to hang on and then after closed session, uh, we'll be back, uh, for Citizens Forum, uh, and then Matters for Consideration. Okay, great. Welcome back to, I guess this is part two and a half of the December 10th meeting of the Livermore City Council. Uh, you notice there's a slight change up here. We rearranged ourselves and I'd like to welcome our new councilperson, Trish Monroe. So, Councilmember, welcome aboard. And, uh, with that, uh, I have the, you have a second opportunity for the Citizens Forum. This, uh, again, this is items that is not on the agenda, uh, and the City Council cannot deliberate nor take action, uh, but I do have a half dozen cards here. Asa Strout, Greg Scott, Anne Brown.
Good evening, Asa Strout. Um, I saved my card for this moment because I more, more, more wanted to say congratulations to Trish in a more formal capacity now that she's actually up there sitting, so congratulations. And I also wanted to say that, uh, Union for Livermore is very excited for the next two years to work with this council, to, you know, continue to work to improve this great city and to advocate for Livermore issues, um, with you guys. So we are going to hold you guys' feet to the fire to some degree on some issues, so hopefully we can all work together and continue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just realized I skipped here. Let me, let me back up a little bit, uh, with respect to the closed session. Was there any reportable action taken, uh, in the closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, there was not.
Okay, great. It, you know, it's all procedure. You got to make sure we do all this stuff. Keep it all legal and legit. Uh, okay. Uh, Greg Scott and Brown, Emily Blumer. Mr. Scott?
Greg Scott, I speak on homelessness. Uh, we aren't going to solve the homelessness problem unless we have the chutzpah and political will to do so. And we don't seem to have that. Uh, we aren't going to solve the homelessness problem unless we have some understanding here about homelessness. We don't seem to have that either, either by the City Council, by the city staff, or by the Human Services Commission. And I've attended almost every meeting of the Human Services Commission this year and frankly, the Human Services Commission is fairly clueless on homelessness. What are we going to do? Um, I've been suggesting since, um, September of 2017 that we could at least have like a safe parking area. The city staff held a seminar on homelessness at Asbury Church and one homeless woman said that she drives with her precious resources to Union City three to four nights a week for safe parking. Well, Union City can have safe parking, but the City of Livermore can't? Uh, come on. You know, uh, we can do better than this. If the scope of homelessness is too much for us, then why don't we narrow the scope? We now have female representation on the City Council. Why don't we narrow it to the point of at least getting the women shelter out there? What we're doing is addressing such a small part of the homeless situation compared to the, what the scope is. This is the problem. Can't we at least get the women into shelter out there? Um, in not understanding that if you, if you discount me on the understanding, then go talk to Lee out there between First and Railroad Avenue. He's been out there for years. He's rotting. You know, the pathway, uh, for the homeless is the pathway of death by despair. Death by despair is a coinage by economist Anne Case and 2015 Nobel Laureate Anton Deaton. Uh, it, it's not very promising. Uh, if you discount, uh, what I'm saying about your understanding of homelessness, then go talk to Brian. He's sitting just south of Pete's Coffee on South Livermore on a regular basis. If you discount me on your understanding of homelessness, one woman over a year ago spoke to you, spoke to the City Council and she said, she a long time, uh, grew up here, a long time Livermore resident, uh, was in the US Navy for 10 years. At that time, she spoke about being, living in her car for five years. She's still in her car. It's over a year later. She's been six years in her car. And what I hear from city staff, eventually, patience. I know a man that's been in his car here for 17 years. With him is a woman with grandma epilepsy. She's been in the car with him for four years. This is insane. It's insane.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anne Brown, Emily Blumer, Stacy Swanson.
Hello, I'm Anne Brown of Livermore. Congratulations to our council. Thank you very much. I'm here as a co-leader for the newly formed Tri-Valley Chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby. And, uh, we are focused on passing legislation at the federal level that will slow and, and eventually stop devastating climate change and reduce our carbon output. But we're also looking for leadership at our city level and we understand that we have a climate action plan that was authored in 2012 and we would like to, um, find out more about the plan. Um, has it been reviewed? How can we learn about the progress toward the goals of that plan? Does it need some updates given the new information that has, uh, ensued in the last six years? Uh, we think the time is right to bring our climate action plan to the attention of our citizens and we'd like to know how we can partner with you to help promote the goals of the plan. Uh, so that's our beginning foray into what we hope will be a very fruitful partnership with the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh, Mr. Spence, is the climate action plan posted on the website?
I believe so. I will definitely double check that.
I think I've seen it up there. But could you, could you check on that? It should be posted on the website, uh, because I remember working on that.
Yes, we'll double check.
Great, thank you. Uh, Emily Blumer, Stacy Swanson.
Just one thing. Not only is the, uh, plan on the website, but the, but we've had updates that I think if you could put the, the update package on there as well, that'd be helpful.
Sure. And we are looking at additional updates this next year, so we can certainly provide some information to Ms. Brown.
Great, thank you. Okay, now Emily Blumer. Back up. And Stacy Swanson.
Hello, and congratulations, uh, Trish, on your appointment. We're excited to have you representing us as women. Um, Mayor John, um, Mick, I can't say your name. I'm nervous. Okay.
Leave breath. We're all friendly up here. It's all a great place, great community.
I would like to thank you for your effort on removing the duck pond in Springtown. Once again, it is a joy to me to drive past it and to watch as the geese have come in and it's flourishing. We thank you for the open space. Um, and I made a deal with my husband. He said I could come to the open, this meeting, as long as I extended an invitation to you to come to the Wetland Preserve, which is right across the street from Pound Park. And it's an area that you can go and you can hike in this preserve and it is a beautiful place. My children and I love it. This time of year, we go out there in our galoshes and we're able to really enjoy the nature there. With your biology background, we think you would really love it, but we also are really wanting to help preserve this as a wetland preserve. Right now, it's also a BMX biking thing and there are some pretty awesome mountains, as my children call them, that have been built in the preserve. Um, we would like to know how we, as citizens, can maintain it as a wildlife refuge, but also be able to accommodate the youth who have obviously taken a liking to the space as well. So, that is all. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, great. Um, should be an email, uh, because I've been out there, it is beautiful. And I know that in the open space plan, there is a wetland preserve area where the creek is, uh, and, yeah, that may be tied into it, but I know that there is a, uh, a permanent plan to keep a wetland preserve out there.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And one of the most unusual experiences that I've had as mayor was after, I am, I am absolutely serious about this. After the, uh, Holiday Lights and Sounds Parade, a, a young boy came up to the, the podium where we were all standing and he had a duck with him. Uh, I guess it was his pet mallard. And he came up to the, uh, to the stage and asked me what happened with the ducks and the geese from the Springtown, uh, duck pond. And I was able to tell him with absolute confidence that all those ducks and geese, uh, were rescued, that they were taken to a preserve, uh, and that they were going to live out their lives comfortably at that preserve. Um, and he seemed to be satisfied and went off on his merry way with his pet duck. But it was, uh, it was an unusual experience, uh, but it, it ended well for everybody, so that's all good. Um, so, thank you, Ms. Blumer. And Stacy Swanson.
You think Emily's nervous, you should see me. Um, also want to welcome Trish as, as our newly elected councilperson and of course, our new mayor and our re-elected Bob Warner. The last meeting I was able to come to, uh, we had asked if we could maybe get some extension of the pass in the Springtown open space, uh, maybe just some gravel so that we have some walking paths during the wet. Um, and I, and I kind of wanted to also bring up that former councilmembers who helped preserve 85 acres in the middle of a suburban area, something that, that is very rarely done anymore. We were helped by Lorraine Turner, we were helped by Stuart Gary, we were helped by Steve Spodowski, Mr. Warner and also Mr. Marchand, and we very much appreciate that. So we just want to kind of start creeping up on the plan, see if we can get a few things done, project by project. As my friend Connie expressed last meeting, uh, we are more than happy to help with funding. You know, bake sales, lemonade, we'll, we'll do what we need to do, but we're very excited about having preserved that land. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And we're going to keep, uh, keep working on that.
Could I ask, uh, Mr. Spence, we, after she spoke last time, we, we, I think we asked, or I asked you to look into that. Have you gotten any, uh, update on that?
Uh, I don't yet, but we will provide an update to you, uh, at your next meeting.
Okay, very good. Um, moving on to, uh, Matters for Consideration, the approval of the City Council Successor Agency 2019 calendar. So everybody's got that in their, uh, in their packet on the agenda. With the, uh, I noticed on the agent, on the, uh, in the packet, it said our first meeting was, uh, the, uh, let's see, I actually wrote this down, uh, but we have a meeting on the, uh, but the, next meeting was the 14th of January. Um, and, uh, we're adjourning tonight to our first meeting on January 7th. Is that going, is it workshop? Is that going to be our norms and values?
It is indeed, and I believe rules of procedure as well. So both of those items, rules of procedure and norms and values.
Okay, very good. Very, because I noticed that, that didn't quite agree, so we're good on that. Um, okay, so, uh, I guess first thing I'd like to do is to, uh, say thanks to, uh, my wingman, Bob Warner, uh, the, uh, vice mayor up to, right now. Uh, done a phenomenal job, the, uh, with, uh, with him working, sort of with everybody and bringing everybody together, because that's where the power of the council is, the power to, to convene, to bring the people together to find solutions. Uh, and we would not have had a solution to Stockman Park, uh, without, uh, Vice Mayor Warner. And, uh, the same thing with the, uh, moving a lot of the veteran and senior housing down to this City Hall campus. Uh, so a, a great strategist and, uh, I don't know if, how many of you realize this, but I can only talk to one councilmember, um, at a time because of the Brown Act. So I can't, uh, you know, contact Bob Coomer and say, hey, uh, Councilmember Coomer, what do you think about this? And then, uh, ask Councilmember Carling and Councilmember Warner or, uh, Councilmember Monroe, uh, what they think about it. I can only talk to one person. So if I want to bounce any ideas off of anybody, the only person I can do that with, uh, consistently is my vice mayor. And so it's a, a, a very valued position, uh, on the council, a position of great trust. Uh, and, uh, you know, if, if I can't be there to do something, I depend upon my vice mayor to be there to get that done. Uh, and, uh, Vice Mayor Bob Warner has just done a remarkable job. Uh, as I said, he's been my, my wingman, my right-hand man. Uh, and with that, I'd like to present him with the proclamation, well, with a plaque recognizing the, uh, the great service. Thank you so much. And, uh, I certainly appreciate the fact that a fellow chemist, uh, has, has offered to step up and, uh, and take on that role. These are, uh, uh, it is a position of great responsibility and I am very happy that, uh, Vice Mayor Warner, uh, Vice Mayor Carling has, uh, stepped up to, uh, to assume that role and I look forward to working with you very closely over the next, uh, the next year. And, uh, who knows? With all that we've accomplished in this last year, uh, I'm really quite excited about what we'll be able to accomplish, uh, in the next year and the years coming. So, um, we got two years to do more great things. So Councilman, Vice Mayor Carling, uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to offer, uh, the vice mayor, the former vice mayor, uh, to say a few words, if you wish. I just kind of threw that on you.
Yeah, that's the, uh, problem of being a vice mayor, you get called on to just talk. Um, but I, but I'll... But I, but I'll be short. I'll just say it's, I've really appreciated the opportunity to be a vice mayor, and it has been just a great experience up here. And under the Brown Act, we do have to be very judicious as to who we can talk to and when, and we've always honored that, and I have valued my conversations with the mayor on how we should proceed. And the council as a whole, we've really accomplished quite a bit in the last couple of years, and so I appreciate having the opportunity to be in the role of vice mayor in the last year. So thank you. And I'm looking forward to Vice Mayor Carling's tenure.
As the incoming vice mayor, any comments? Any specific agendas right now?
No, I think it's, I appreciate the confidence that you have in me, and I look forward to working with the mayor and with the rest of the council for that matter, but I think it'll be a great opportunity. As my colleague to my right mentioned, we have still a lot of work to do, and I think it's exciting for the next couple of years here in the city of Livermore. So let's all work together to move forward. Thanks.
I like that sentiment. Work together and move forward. Very good. Thank you. Okay, so now, another thing people don't really realize, and when, when they see us sitting up here, because I've heard people say, oh, the mayor just runs two meetings a month. We represent collectively, we represent the city of Livermore's best interests on over 35 boards and commissions and regional agencies. So we're very busy to make sure that our best interests are seen to and are addressed, because as has been said many times, if you are not at the table, you may be on the menu. So you want to make sure that you are represented at the table. So we have a number of agencies that we are representing the city on. I just realized on the way over here that I had done these in a left-handed fashion and had everybody appointed by their name, but what you guys need is it by the, the agency. So I got that back, you got that done, so we're good. So, on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, ACTC, I am the delegate on that, and that, and then Bob Coomer is the alternate, and Bob Coomer is also the Alameda County Transportation Commission Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee delegate as well. So he represents the city on the PAPCO. Altamont Landfill Community Monitoring Committee is Bob Carling, still there. Altamont Landfill Open Space Account Advisory Committee is Bob Warner. And then for the Altamont Regional Traffic Authority, this is an authority for the tracey and the connectivity between our communities. I am the delegate to that, and Bob Coomer is the alternate. The ACAP, that's on here, I think ACAP went away, did it not? Yeah, ACAP is gone.
Yes, I actually believe you are correct. They are finally gone.
Yeah, because I remember, shows you how far back that was, Jeff Williams was our representative to that, and that was, that was way back, yeah. And that ultimately went away. For ABAG, I did a bit of a switch here. Trish Monroe as the delegate, and Bob Coomer, you'll continue to be the alternate on that. Chamber of Commerce Liaison, that's, that is me. The East Bay Community Choice Energy Joint Powers Authority, the EBCE, JPA, I have Trish Monroe for the delegate on that. Bob Carling will continue to be the alternate. GOLFA, I am the delegate on that, and Darren Greenwood is the alternate, and that's not really my choice, that's required by GOLFA, so it's already been determined. The Intergovernmental Committee, this is a joint committee between the city, LARPD, and the school district, and the, let's see, Bob Warner is going to be the delegate on that. Trish Monroe will be the alternate. League of California Cities, East Bay Division, we have Bob Carling as the delegate and Trish Monroe as the alternate. Bob, see, the Livermore Amter Valley Transit Authority, LAFTA, that's the wheels bus, that's Bob Warner is going to be the delegate. Bob Coomer will also continue on as the delegate, and Bob Carling will be the alternate. The Livermore Amter Valley Water Management Agency, the Lavma Joint Powers, since water has been my life, I put myself on that, and also Bob Warner as a delegate. Bob Coomer is the alternate. The Livermore Area Recreation and Park District Liaison Committee, moving on with the members of the group, the intergovernmental, Bob Warner will be the member on that, Trish Monroe also as the member. Livermore Cultural Arts Council, Trish Monroe will be the delegate. Bob Warner will take my place as the alternate. Livermore Downtown, Inc., Bob Warner will be the liaison. Bob Carling will be the alternate. The Livermore Dublin City Council Liaison Committee, I will be a delegate for that, as will Councilmember Coomer, and then we rotate around as alternates as need be. Livermore Pleasanton City Council Liaison Committee, I will be the delegate, as will Dr. Carling, and then also the reinder of the council as alternates as needed. The Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department Joint Powers Authority, that'll continue to be myself and Bob Warner. For the sister city committees, I am the delegate for the three committees, only one of which has really been active recently, that's Yozkaido, Japan. We also have Ketsultenango, Guatemala, and Shnizinsk, Russia. The delegate for Yozkaido will continue to be Bob Warner. Ketsultenango, Guatemala, will be Trish Monroe, and Shnizinsk, the alternate, will be Bob StopWaste.org, Bob Carling will continue to be the delegate, and Bob Coomer the alternate. The Tri-Valley Adolescent Health Initiative, now I understand that that, is that gone away? Or is that still, still in existence? We haven't, it hasn't met for a while. Has that, yeah, and Councilmember Coomer, have you ever, okay, I believe that that has also gone away.
Yes, we believe that's correct as well.
Okay. Okay, so, hey, this is more spare time. The Tri-Valley Cities Council, that's everybody. The Tri-Valley Community Television Corporation is, I am the delegate for that, and the city manager is the alternate. The Tri-Valley Council Affordable Housing Committee, has that met any time in the recent past, if anybody recalls? I believe they're still around. Okay, so the, so the Tri-Valley Council Affordable Housing Committee, Bob Carling is the delegate for that, and Trish Monroe is seen to be the logical alternate, since they are both part of the newly-formed interagency, no, the city council subcommittee on homelessness. So it just seems that you guys are on the subcommittee for homelessness. It would be reasonable that you would be on the affordable housing committee since they do dovetail. The Tri-Valley San Joaquin Valley Regional Rail Authority, that's the valley link, that will continue, I will be the main delegate on that, and since Bob Coomer is also handling some of the transit work, he will be the alternate. The Tri-Valley Transportation Council, will be Trish Monroe as the delegate, and Bob Coomer is the alternate. Water Agency's Roundtable Liaison, I'll be the delegate on that. Bob Warner will also be a delegate, and Bob Carling will be the alternate. The Zone 7 Intergovernmental Liaison Committee, I will be the representative, as will Bob Warner. The Alameda County Land Use Commission, I'm sorry, the Alameda County Airport Land Use Commission. This is an appointment made by the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, and I am the commissioner for Livermore, as is David Dukodo, our airport manager. The Alameda County Mayor's Conference, I'm the delegate to that, and Vice Mayor Bob Carling will be the, the alternate. East Bay Regional Communication System Authority, Mark Roberts is the board member for that, and I am the alternate. And the Local Agency Information Commission is also a, an Alameda County Mayor's Conference appointment, and I, correction on that, I am no longer the chair. I am a, one of the commissioners. Also, there has been some interest, we do have a liaison that goes to the Chamber of Commerce and also to the Livermore Downtown, Inc. There's been, because we've got such great partnership going on between the downtown and the additional housing coming in down here, there's been interest expressed in having a liaison to the Stockman's Association. Now, is that something I could make an appointment here, or would that be something that would require additional council action? Because it would be a voluntary liaison to the Stockman.
In other words, a liaison to the association itself.
Yes.
So the, so the question is, so yes, we can, you can do it essentially on our part. Our assumption is that the Stockman's Association wishes to have a liaison. Normally, there's a, there's the flip side of that, so assuming that that happens, if you appointed a liaison, there would be one.
Looking at the president of the Stockman's Association, do I have, okay, I got a thumbs up from the president of the Stockman's Association. So a thumbs up there, a thumbs up from here. So if that's all it takes, I would like to appoint Councilman Warner to that position, because he's already developed a great working rapport with the Stockman's Association, and I look forward to other great things coming from that association as well. Okay, as far as the appointment of councilmembers to the city council subcommittee on advisory bodies, we've just recently come off of Councilmember Coomer and Spadowski. I always like to have one member continue on, but since that member is, is no longer here, we go back to the next set, and that would be councilmembers, well, it'd be Councilmember Warner and, and myself. So it'd be Marshand and Warner for the next six months. All right? Everything clear? Okay, and. Okay, so with that, I think we're done. Okay, so with that, we are adjourning to the special meeting workshop on January 7th, 1:30, Library Boardroom, and followed by the regular council meeting Monday, January 14th, 7 o'clock, right back here. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to all.